Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, and this is the Town of Air's Cable Television License Public Hearing. Tonight, we are having this public hearing according to the provisions of the Federal Cable Act at 47 U.S. Code, Section 521, et cetera, and of the Massachusetts Cable Statute of Mass. General Law, Chapter 166A, and Department of Telecommunications and Cable Regulations at 207 CMR, Section 1, et cetera. The purpose of this hearing is to help the Select Board of the Town of Air determine the following two things: Is Comcast in compliance with its currently existing cable television renewal license, which was granted by this board on April 1st, 2013? And two, what are the town's future community-related cable needs over the term of the next renewal license? I will now ask that the public hearing notice be read by Julie Murray.
Please take notice that the Select Board of the Town of Air, Massachusetts, as issuing authority for a cable television license under Mass. General Law, Chapter 166A, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. The public hearing will be held in the auditorium of the Air Shirley Regional High School, 141 Washington Street, Air, Massachusetts. The purpose of the public hearing will be to determine whether to issue a cable television license to Comcast. All applications, reports, statements, and license drafts to be considered at the hearing that constitute public records under state law are available for public inspection during regular business hours and for reproduction at a reasonable fee. Members of the public are invited to attend and be heard on the topic: A) Whether the current cable operator is in full compliance with its current existing cable license; and B) What are the town's future community cable-related needs?
Thank you, Jared. Julie, I would like now, so I get when I'm reading something. I would now like to introduce the members of the Cable Advisory Committee. To my right, we have Janet Pavadakis, who is also the Chair of the Air Public Access Committee. To my left, we have Chief Brian Gill, Julie Murray, our Cable Counsel, William Hedwig, and, of course, our Town Manager, Robert Pomprian. All right. So we are undergoing a process called ascertainment. It means we are making a determination of what it's, what our future cable needs will be over the presumptive renewal license term of 10 years. So I will now ask our Cable Counsel, Mr. Hedwig, to present open comments and summarize what is occurring in the cable industry in recent months and years as a context and background for our current negotiations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee and members of the public, good evening. I think most of you probably know that we are in the era of cable history, which is probably called the cord-cutting era. What that means is, as most of you probably know, that the cable industry and cable subscribers in many places, including many towns in Massachusetts and across the nation, are seeing the number of subscribers decline as streaming of video content online has increased. That is a trend that has been going on for some time, six, seven, eight years. In some municipalities, it's extreme, and in others, it's not occurring at all. There are some municipalities in Massachusetts where we still see growth of cable subscribers. It is uncertain in anybody's mind, and none of us has a crystal ball, whether or how long this trend will continue and where it may lead us. It is, however, a factor that we must take into consideration as we consider our renewal negotiations with Comcast. And what it may mean for us is, it may mean if our PEG grants are pegged to the number of subscribers, which certainly part of them will be, it may mean that we will have to face a decline in revenue over the years, and we will have to try to take that into account in our negotiations with Comcast. I can give you a little bit of background on the ground rules. The ground rules are quite simple. All of the things that many people come to cable hearings for and want to discuss are off the record, off the table. Those include rate reductions. The Select Board has no power to negotiate for reductions in rates. That's because cable rates are no longer regulated. But even when they were, it wasn't the Select Board's job to regulate rates, it was the states. The other thing that many people come to hearings for is programming changes, and unfortunately, the Select Board has no power to control programming changes or bring or force Comcast or negotiate Comcast to provide new programming that people may want. The wisdom of the FCC says that that is for the market to determine and not a negotiating topic. The third thing that many people want to talk about when they come to these hearings is internet access. And it's a strange anomaly that you have a fiber optic wire going from one pole to the next and being strung up and down the streets of towns and connecting to people's homes. And through that wire, you have three signals. You have, one, a telephone signal; two, you have a broadband or an internet signal; and through that fiber optic wire, you have the third signal, it's a cable television signal. And it's a strange anomaly to think that the Board of, the Select Board and the issuing authorities in our towns in Massachusetts can regulate only one of those three signals, even though they all go through the same wires, they all get, occupy the same public rights away. In any event, we are here to negotiate a cable license, and cable it will be. We cannot do anything about telephone service or internet service, unfortunately. That having been said, if there is anyone here who wishes to have Comcast hear them about programming, about rates, or about internet, or anything else, I'm happy to say that there is a Comcast representative present here. Greg Franks from Comcast is sitting here. He'll be happy to take your comments, I'm sure, and take them back, or be pleased to speak with you after the meeting, if you wish. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my comments for the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much. So could you explain to us the current, the comparison of the current license and then from 2013 with the license being proposed?
Yes, I can. We currently have a 10-year Comcast cable renewal license that was issued in April of 2013. It will be coming, the term of the license will be March 31st, 2023. So it's two months from now, approximately, the license is up. The current license, under the current license, we were granted 3% gross annual revenues as the annual funding we get every year payable, I think probably quarterly, but back then it may have been payable semi-annually or annually, don't remember. But we get 3% gross annual revenues. That is gross annual revenues of Comcast's total cable subscriber sales in the air market. It doesn't include telephone, it doesn't include internet, it's just cable. Comcast also gave us a, I'm sorry, I said 3%, it's 4.56%. 4.56% gross annual revenues. We have three channels locally, they are standard definition channels, and we got a capital grant in the amount of $150,000, which was payable in, I think, two separate payments. One was $125,000, the other was $25,000. And as I said, we had a 10-year cable television license. It went from 2013 up to March of 2023. Now, when you sit down to negotiate a cable television license, it is the usual expectation that you will be looking for more. And that is certainly the case here. Some communities level fund, but most communities, because of rising costs, such as we all have, because of the possibility of inflation, which I guess is the same as rising costs, and also because of the cord-cutting and the potential prospect for decline of revenue over 10 years, we will also be looking for more funding from Comcast. And the first thing we're going to be looking for and asking for is to have the 4.56% gross annual revenue go up to 5%. 5% is the cap. We can't get any more of gross annual revenues according to the Federal Cable Act and FCC regulations. The capital grant of $150,000 that we got over the last 10 years, we are going to look to increase that to up to $250,000. And our presentation tonight will show why that is the figure that you arrive at when you consider our future community cable-related needs. We're looking for a 10-year contract, as we had before, and we're looking for the three SD channels, and we're looking for one HD channel from Comcast, which Comcast has been in the habit of granting to communities now for about three or four years. So summary between current license and what we'll be looking for, and of course, the presentation will show the background of all of that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. So again, what we're trying to do is we're going to show you a presentation to explain to you kind of the relationship that you have with APEC through your cable subscription, and the need and why it is so important to continue to fund the Air Public Access Channel. So with that, I would like to turn this over to Janet Pavadakis, who is also the Chair of Air Public Access.
Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for showing up. When you walked in, you should have gotten a fact sheet. This is pretty much what I'll be sort of like touching on throughout this presentation. It is also available on the website, should you want to go ahead and download it there. All right, Cindy? Thank you. Okay. What I want to, all to know is that APEC is a nonprofit organization. We're a 501(c)(3) television and media station. We go ahead and will take care of government meetings as well as town events, any type of video coverage for the Air Shirley Regional School District. We offer other items like Movie in the Park, there's going to be three of them coming up in 2023. So our mission is to go ahead and deliver premium video content through public, you heard Attorney Hedwig go ahead and say, P-E-G, peg. It's the Public Education and Government Channels, Channel 8, Channel 9, and Channel 99. All right, Cindy? I promise not to go ahead and read everything through every single one of these. What I want to make sure people realize is that we're not Comcast, we're not the cable company, we're not governed by, you know, the government, or, you know, the town government. We are not governed by the school. We are our own separate entity, which is great, because this gives us a chance to go ahead and take feedback from the public and do items that are events that people want to see, you know, produced on those channels. What, we want to make sure that, again, reiterating, we don't get an endless fund from Comcast. There's a certain fee that's inside your bill towards the end that will go, you know, at the bottom of the bill, that is a franchising fee that we go ahead and use to go ahead and offset our costs. And then, we have, we know that there has been a lot of talk out there of, how come we don't have any other, any other cable provider? We have even asked for other, other companies, such as, you know, Verizon, to come in and make a presentation, be here as well. We've asked them to come and also, you know, be part of the town. They have not responded, they, you know, they pretty much have said no. So with that, we have tried, all right? I want everybody to know, we have tried. So right now, Comcast is our provider, and as being a subscriber myself, it's like, I'm, it's expensive, but I know that it's really good. All right, next one. All right, what, I want you to know what we've been doing in the past five years. APEC, I mean, again, APEC is the, is the entity that will go ahead and use the monies from cable to go ahead and show what the town is doing. We have really one full-time employee, which is the Executive Director. Then we do have other part-time employees, some work approximately 20 hours, some work 20 hours a month. So with that, it's, it's a very small staff, and they do a lot. One thing that, again, it's a lot of information on here where, you know, they've got the technology, they, you know, we try to keep increasing this technology, and that's the reason why we get that lump sum capital expenditure that we're allowed to do within the 10-year period, so that equipment needs to be updated. Like, from what I understand, we're going to be updating some of our equipment within the next couple of years. But what I want to make sure everybody knows that they're really, right now, there's only one full-time employee. And we do hear back from individuals, you know, that we want to have more events covered, we want to have more, you know, items being listed, you know, on either television or, again, on the website. But one thing I want everybody to understand, that the, in the past couple of years, the pandemic really drove everybody to a new height. So I want to just let everybody know that Scott, the former Executive Director, we have James, Barry, Trevor, and we had help from the town with Cindy Knox being the IT person, that they went above and beyond what needed to happen because of the pandemic. And APEC was able to deliver the meetings to your home so that you didn't have to worry about coming out or, you know, of going ahead and coming to the meetings and such. So I definitely want to commend them, especially with the budget that they had, to go ahead and do that. So again, that's what, you know, we've been doing in the past five years of moving on. Okay, Cindy? Next ones? When the attorney went ahead and spoke about what we want for future, you know, for the needs of APEC, is we want to make sure that we have the staff and the equipment to continue on, because again, I know that I've heard people out in the street going, well, how come you don't show this? How come, I mean, it was great to find out that we're going to get the HD channel, because we've got individuals saying it would be nice to have the high-def. So with that, these are things that are going to cost, you know, a little bit extra, put in some closed captioning and such. So with that, we also want to make sure that, again, that there's more training available. Some of our individuals that work here went through workshops, we want to be able to offer more of that. Well, you need the team trained to go ahead and do that. But to have those types of workshops, especially in the schools, catch them while they're young, you know, so that they get an idea of how to make that video of, you know, the Digital Film Festival is a great example, you know, when you go ahead and be able to watch some of those videos that the kids produce, you know, the creative ideas that they come up with. That's what we want to be able to do, but again, you need the staff to do that. So some of the, when we're asking for the increases, that's what we're going to be looking for. Increase in training the staff, training other individuals, training residents in town can go ahead and able to go through some of these trainings, and then use the video cameras themselves, too. And I think that that's an awesome thing that, you know, we have available. Again, that's because of the agreement that we have with Comcast, with the cable provider, to give us those extra funds so that we can go ahead and do that. The other thing, too, is we want a little more presence, like I say, within social media and such. All right, Cindy? So we're going to be negotiating this contact, okay? Where this public forum, where all, you know, you all are here, all right, to hear the concerns. I know that we've received a couple of letters from individuals. And with that, we're going to, again, as of March 31st, we're going to have our new, you know, that old contract ends, and we're going to be talking with the Comcast representative, you know, to say, all right, we know that because of a survey that we've done within the town, people are interested in getting more sports, more classic movies, more events within the town, you know, being filmed and being accessible, you know, through the cable channels. So with that, we're going to be looking for possibly between, again, the survey said individuals will be okay with maybe a 50 cent to a dollar more a month, all right? So let's go ahead and take that and see what we can go ahead and do with it. So this is what we're, you know, we're going to be going for, like I say, asking for the next 10 years. Next one, please, Cindy? And as the attorney went ahead and spoke about, you know, right now, we get $150,000, it's only $15,000 a year for capital expenditures, and 4.56. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be asking for $240,000 for the 10-year, which is $24,000 a year for, for capital, for capital, as well as looking for, instead of the 4.56, we're going to be looking for a possible, you know, 5%, 10% increase. So what does that all mean? Go ahead, Cindy. It means that when you look at your bill, and again, towards the end, there's those fees at the, at the bottom of your bill, you're going to be looking at approximately 50 cents to maybe a dollar 75 more. And this is so that we're able to, you know, get the staff, get the capital, you know, for, for the equipment, to make sure that we have all the equipment and the resources to go ahead and do this continued training, do this within the schools, make sure that we cover all the different public events that happen, like the Newton Street Festival and such, which I think, again, is great. So I want to go ahead and, next one? Okay. So this, this way here, when you're looking at, if we go with the 5%, it's going to look at approximately 96 cents a month. And again, it opens up a heck of a lot more, you know, opportunities, you know, for the town. We're always available, you know, to get feedback over at APEC. And this way here, you know, again, we can meet the needs. So we've got, any questions is the next slide, I believe? Right? Okay. And one thing that I just want to add on a personal level, like I say, I am a subscriber. I do like Comcast. I understand, you know, some other local towns have other, you know, other providers. But one thing that I like about Comcast is you can tape five shows at once, all right? And from what I understand, the other ones can't. So I need to go ahead and make sure I've got that in there. So I'm sorry, I know I took that. All right. So again, thank you all for being here. If there's any questions, now's the time to go ahead and ask. Thank you.
All right. Anyone here that would like to ask a question or say something, please come to the microphone and state your name and address?
Hello? I think it's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, first of all-
And you are?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Susan Copeland. I am a resident of the town since 1976. I also am the town clerk since 2014. I'm also a parent. I have two children that are in the Air Shirley School District, so. But I wanted to first say thank you to the Cable Advisory Committee for your efforts towards this renegotiation. I understand the importance, and so I appreciate you all stepping into this and getting all this information. I learned a lot more than I thought I was going to, so thank you. But I just wanted to speak on the importance of the public access television for the Town of Air. The positive impact that public access television has on my professional and personal life is long, but I've scaled down to a few points I'd like to share today. Without printed news circulations, we are relying on upgrading our outreach with the electronic world, and public access television is our catalyst to get the information out to the public. Recordings that range from town meeting, board, and committee meetings, public forums, local community events, and school activities is paramount to keeping everyone connected. In the past, members of APEC have been creative in working in collaboration with my own office on getting out the importance of voting and information on elections. This is also true for other departments, boards, and committees, in helping to highlight and give insight to the projects that we work so hard on for our town. As a parent, I know firsthand the relationship with the school district in working with elementary children on writing news reports, conducting interviews with local town officials, and then the entire editing process that followed to post a professional and informative video for the community. Whether it's community, school event, or sports, there is something about seeing yourself on television, no matter the network. It's a shot of adrenaline to our psyches. Open town meeting is the truest form of local government. It may have variations over the years, but it is government of and for the people, but more importantly, by the people. It remains true democracy at work, and that's why it is so vital, in my opinion, that the relationship we have with APEC and the dedication that they give to the recordings and helping us to provide this information to our residents is so vital. Part of our mission as public officials is working in a transparent environment, and the relations we have with APEC and the public access television is key in helping us stay in contact with our community. It would be extremely beneficial for Comcast and our public access television to have the needs to pick up the baton of the written media and continue to support and evolve these efforts in this market with keeping our community informed and engaged. So that's all I have to say. Thank you again for all your efforts.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Yes.
Madam Chair. Tim Johnson, both the Fire Chief and a town resident, dating back to slightly longer than Ms. Copeland of the 1960s as a resident. I understand APEC plays an important role in supporting our town and residents via access television. Whether it's a public meeting or educational event, it's nice if you're unable to attend such meetings or events that you may go back and view the programming or meeting. Town residents are able to be informed on such topics as town government, along with public, educational, and sporting events. And if I might add, most recently, back to 2019, what the previous chief, Pajazek, we were able to make, at that time we had a capital purchase of a fire truck, we were able to make a recording of that and get the public more informed in what we were actually trying to do. And most recently, during the pandemic, as we know, went to remote learning, so we continued our SAFE program, which is the Student Awareness Fire Education Program, with the help of APEC, by coming down to the fire station and recording those programs, so that curriculum was able to continue in the schools during that remote learning. In conclusion, as a department head and resident, I would like to support the recommendations of the Cable Advisory Committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody? Yep.
Jeff Thomas, Air Parks Director, and also a town resident. And I find it hilarious that we're over here while you guys are there, but I guess that's where things landed. Anyway, I support what you guys are doing and trying to get a higher rate of pay for APEC, higher funding. We at the Parks Department are in a partnership with APEC. We do a number of things. As Ms. Pavadak has pointed out, the Movie in the Park has been a great thing, and we'd love to see more of that. And obviously, that's a funding issue to try to get more of that. But beyond that, we have always wanted to do more with public access television, and we just can't do it because there's no opportunity for us to. Some of the things that we'd like to see is, many of the programs, we offer dozens of programs in towns for youth and adults, and just the opportunity, as, as I believe Ms. Copeland pointed out, having, to see yourself on television as a child. I mean, that's an amazing thing to have happen. And we have so many special events that would be great to have an opportunity to be put on public television that we just can't get to at this point. So anything we could do to try to promote that and get it to a higher level would be hugely beneficial, beneficial to the town. And we, at the Parks Department, highly look forward to the success of what you're trying to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody? Mr. Pomprian?
Madam Chair. Members-
Just interrupt. Robert, could we have some help? Thomas is outside. Thank you. I apologize for the interruption.
Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Robert Pomprian, Town Manager. For the record, there have been six letters submitted for the record. I just want to point that out to the committee. A letter from the Chief of Police, Brian Gill, a letter from the Director of the Senior Center, Dr. Katie Petrasi, a letter from the DPW Director, Dan Van Schalwick, a letter from the Air Library Director, Luke Kirkland, a letter from the Town Accountant, Carrie Cooper, and a letter from the Finance Manager, Ms. Barbara Tierney, that will be part of the record through the Town Clerk. With that, I'd just like to, I also have a brief statement and will submit a letter as well, and the Director of the Senior Center, if there is an objection, and the Library Director in both of their letters- Director, and both of their letters are brief, couldn't be here, but asked if I would just read them into the record, if that's okay with the committee?
That would be awesome.
Okay. So first, I'll just start from my vantage point. As mentioned, Robert Pomerian, Town Manager. This is my 13th year with the Town of Air, and I just want to touch upon the importance of public access television to the Town of Air Municipal Government. As the Air Cable Advisory Committee prepares to enter negotiations with Comcast for a successor agreement, I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight the integral importance of public access television to the Town of Air's municipal government operations, and to encourage the committee to ask for a reasonable increase in funding in this next cable license for the purposes of expanding the capacity and capabilities of the Air Public Access Corporation, known as AIPAC. Without question, public access television as provided by AIPAC on the PEG, Public Education and Governmental Channels, is essential for an informed participatory and vibrant Town of Air. The televised coverage of the town's various elected, appointed, and volunteer boards, committees, and commissions is essential for the public to be informed about the operations, decisions, and events of their local government. This is a cornerstone of good government and transparent government. It is also enables members of the community who may not be able to physically attend a meeting to stay informed and involved. Additionally, by recording public meetings and deliberations, this creates a permanent video record of the meeting proceedings, which becomes an invaluable record and resource. In March of 2020, the importance of public access television became even more apparent as COVID-19 propelled the world into a global pandemic. This is something none of us could have foreseen 10 years ago with the previous license. It was at this moment, as cities and towns such as Air scrambled to put together the appropriate communication plans to ensure that not only the public were informed, but that they could participate remotely and safely. It was at this time that AIPAC, working closely with the Town of Air's IT and Facilities Departments, as well as other town departments, developed a robust remote public participation system of which the capabilities of AIPAC were essential and made possible by an ongoing investment in public access television. One of the key lessons of the pandemic has been that we must continue to invest in the capacity and capabilities of public access television in AIPAC. As we enter this post-pandemic world, rising costs, inflation, and the expanding needs of public access require that we modestly increase our financial support and commitment to public access in AIPAC for the next 10 years. To do that, the contract proposals of the Air Cable Advisory Committee modestly increased funding to a level which equates to approximately a 96 cent increase per subscriber per month is a realistic investment in the future of public access, AIPAC, and the Town of Air. To conclude, I support the efforts and proposals of the Advisory Committee designed not only to maintain the important level of public access television services, but to further expand and develop public access for the Town of Air over the next decade. In doing so, we will be ensuring a transparent, participatory, educated, and vibrant Town of Air. And I thank the committee for your consideration, and I will enter that into the record. I just also want to add, Madam Chair, as you are aware, the Office of the Select Board and Town Manager is one of the more public offices in town that receives a lot of complaints and concerns from the public. And I do want to note for the record that we do receive, over the last 10-year period, we do receive periodically, and this is illustrated in the survey conducted by this committee, that there are complaints and concerns regarding the customer service levels from Comcast, specifically response time, follow-up time, and so forth. So I think that should be noted as the public hearing is also, one of the topics of the public hearing, is compliance with the current license. And the survey that was conducted by the committee captures that data. I also want to mention, and I know that the committee has discussed this finally for the record, one of the things we have heard periodically but consistently over the last 10 years is a consideration of some type of senior citizen discount or veteran services discount. Lastly, when I talk about the increased capacity of AIPAC, and Ms. Provodakis and others spoke of this in the presentation, it's been a one full-time position operation over the last 10 years. In order to do more over the next 10 years, the increase of that capacity is an investment in the personnel requests from the proposal. So I think that is important to note, that the funding is to go to staff and equipment to increase modestly the capacity of AIPAC moving forward. Briefly, the other two letters, which are much shorter, but they ask that I read them into the record, and I appreciate this. The first one is from Luke Kirkland, the Director of the Air Library. Dear Air Cable Advisory Committee, please accept this letter of support for the requested increase in funding in the town cable license contract with Comcast. We at the Air Library, in keeping with the ideals and responsibilities of our profession, believe that communities deserve free and open access to information. While many assume our interest is limited to the world of publishing and entertainment via books, periodicals, and DVDs, our most fundamental work is to help people better understand themselves and their place in any number of communities, large or small. In this spirit, we are hopeful the Air Cable Advisory Committee is successful in its requests. These funds will ultimately go towards more appropriately funding the Air Public Access Channel, a critical local vehicle for broadcasting cultural and educational programs and documenting the functioning of town government. Without public access channels like AIPAC, communities lack grassroots avenues for celebrating the civic life of their place of residence and are ultimately denied an incredibly potent tool for understanding themselves. Sincerely, Luke Kirkland, Director, Air Library. And Madam Chair, lastly, and I appreciate the committee's time, to the Air Cable Advisory Committee, from Dr. Katie Petrasi, Ph.D., Director, Air Council on Aging, Senior, Senior Center, subject the importance of public access television for seniors. As your committee undertakes the very important work of renegotiating Air's Comcast contract, I request that you prioritize the needs of our seniors. Current trends in the way we consume information and entertainment are leaving many seniors behind, increasing the need to keep cable affordable and support public access television for our most vulnerable citizens. Older adults are typically no longer working and tend to watch more television than working adults. Cable TV and public access television affords opportunities to stay connected with local government by watching various boards and committee meetings of the town. Collaborations between the, between AIPAC and the Senior Center have brought valuable fitness and educational content to homebound seniors and encourages seniors to attend Senior Center events. Cable programming helps seniors stay informed about events and provides opportunities for intellectual stimulation and entertainment. Sitcoms, documentaries, and news channel banter create shared experiences and common ground or basis for debate for social interactions among seniors and helps to counteract the impacts of isolation. Despite its growing popularity amongst younger people, many seniors cannot afford the ever-increasing number of premium channels and streaming services. Beyond the monthly subscription costs, additional requirements to enjoy these services, such as home internet access and upgraded equipment such as smart TVs, price many seniors out of this content. Additionally, tech literacy prevents many seniors from accessing and maintaining these services, as well as enjoying alternatives such as free, fair-use content platforms like YouTube. As a result, seniors rely heavily on cable, and we need to keep it affordable for them. While internet access is outside the scope of this evening's hearing, cable and internet are often bundled together, whereby getting behind in payments on one service impacts access to the other. Lack of access to all that the internet provides creates what is known as the digital divide. This phenomenon has been well-studied as a social determinant of health. Access to affordable cable and internet affects not only entertainment options, but whether seniors can access telehealth appointments, apply for senior housing or rental assistance, switch Medicare plans, and visit with friends and family living far away. The Air Senior Center wishes to thank the Cable Advisory Committee for their ongoing efforts to keep cable affordable, provide discounts to seniors, and fully fund AIPAC so that they can bring quality programming to Air Seniors. Sincerely, Katie Petrasi, Ph.D., Director, Air Senior Center. Madam Chair, members of the committee, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Chief, did you have anything you'd like to say?
Stay back. No. I did have a-
Give him room, he's going to speak.
I was brought on here for crowd control only. No, I'd like to, it's almost kind of reiterating what Ms. Copeland said. Being a resident in town, and kids going through the school system, actually, one of my kids is in, in one of the video production classes and has piqued his interest so much that it's a consideration of him moving forward and actually taking up that topic as, as he considers going off to college in a few years. So the, the work that AIPAC has done in the schools through their digital, digital classes, I think, is invaluable and should be, continue to be supported in that way. And from the police aspect, and I have a letter on, on file that will be distributed, but without, without reading it verbatim, for me, it's invaluable with, with the amount of meetings that are attended. You, you tend to miss a few here and there. Being able to go back and either review a meeting that you were at or one that you had missed, to me, is, is, is very important because there's a lot of aspects that, that affect the law enforcement world, and, and being able to, you know, guide, guide my department through the, through whatever's happening in town. It's very important for me to go back and find out what, what's happening at these other meetings. And from a, another aspect from my department, making community contacts and connecting with our, with, with the people in town is, is one of the reasons why we're so successful. We, we do have a pretty prominent social media footprint, but in the last several years, we've worked with AIPAC on producing several PSA kind of things through our School Resource Officer, which were very different for us to, to be in the video world. We've also been able to put out, in conjunction with an opioid awareness group, a very informative movie about the, the effects of opioid, the opioid epidemic, from how it starts to the unfortunate tragic endings of it. And we were, we were proud to help out with that, as well as kind of jumping into what we're calling the Air Police Show with Sergeant McDonald. And the first episode of that was kind of going over the history of policing and going over the history of policing in Air. So it was really, a really big step for us, and I think an important step in maintaining that community contact, you know, from the police, from our, from our police standpoint, and well-received from hearing what, the people who had watched it. So yeah, it's, for, for us, it's an important tool, and highly recommend that we continue as a community to use AIPAC to its fullest and to improve upon it. Where we've, with the, with the budget that we've had in town and put towards AIPAC and the things that can, that were done, I truly believe that with this increase, we'll be able to do a lot more and do, and be a bigger benefit to the town and its community.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
I don't think I have too much else to say, other than what has been echoed, but I do, I don't think you can say it louder than the Council on Aging already did, that for the homebound, this is just such an important piece that keeps everyone connected and informed in our town, and it's, it's important. I too have students that were in the Page Hilltop News and interviewed the Town Manager and some other people here, and I, it was just a fun way to engage in the community. And for those that may know me from Planning Board or CPC, what you might not see is that my sons, who have to sit through the fun meetings, are usually actually in the booth with the AIPAC members and Barry, showing them how filming works and how this goes. So it keeps them entertained and committed to their town, and so I'm grateful.
So one of the things that, that keeps getting said is, you know, how, you know, somebody might be seeing themselves on TV, and, you know, how that could make them feel. So the importance of that video being made by AIPAC is also a benefit to, say you have a relative who lives in another state and maybe couldn't get here to go to whatever event that that individual that you want to showcase to is at. Well, they've probably got an internet access, so you can at least give them a link so that they can watch the video, so they can at least be talking to that individual going, "Oh, my goodness, I saw you. That was wonderful. I'm sorry I wasn't there, but that made me feel like I was." So there's that also important connection that AIPAC provides. We've talked about how important it is that our meetings be filmed for you so that you can watch when it's convenient for you, because sometimes it's not convenient for you to be able to attend the multitudes of meetings that you might be interested in, but you can keep in contact. You can also, you can be able to see those fun events that maybe you were at, but you didn't get to see all the different angles. So now you're going to be like, "Well, what did that candlelight stroll look like from the front? I was in the back." Okay? What did that Memorial Day event by the American Legion look like? Now I'm going to get to watch it. You know, I was in the back. I couldn't, I couldn't see it. So it, it provides you that chance to, even if you were there, to relive the moment or see it from a different angle. So it's very important that we keep this public access channel, and it's very important that we get it upgraded as much as possible. So we are hoping that you are all in agreement with what this committee is recommending. Anything else that anyone would like to add? Okay. Well then, I just want to let everyone know that all the written letters or emails addressing Comcast's performance or our future needs, it should be, will be accepted as exhibits and made, and for the record. You have up in, for the next seven days to be able to get that information to us so that they can be added to the record. And then as far as like the comment that was made, like, you know, you contact Comcast, how long does it take? There is a federal statute as to how long they can keep you on hold. So that also, you need to let us know so that we can make sure that Comcast is in compliance per federal law. Okay? So if there is nothing else, then I will make a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes? This public hearing is adjourned. Thank you very much.
I thank you, everybody.
Thank you.